Good evening, and thank you for joining us for the regular meeting of the Dearborn Board of Education meeting on April 12th, 2021. It is 7:06. This is the first time that this board has been all together in the same room. It's been over a year since the school board has been in a meeting in person, COVID. So it's good to see everybody in person. Call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Hussein Berry?
Here.
Trustee Patrick Giambrassio?
Here.
Trustee Roxanne McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Adam Moses?
Here.
Trustee Mary Petlicoff?
Here.
Trustee Irene Watts?
Here.
President Jim Thorpe?
Here. Next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Maluero, Gear Park Elementary. Baramina Jones, Edison. Aid, Edison. Who will lead the pledge?
I did. I did. When you sit back down, bring your mic closer.
Hi, this is Mr. Maluera from Gear Park Elementary School. Good evening. We have two students that are going to recite the pledge. The first student is Amina Jones from Ms. Sevasth's classroom. And the second student is Madison Jones from Ms. Lucco's classroom. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to their public, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with just as well.
Thank you very much for the students who helped us with the Pledge of Allegiance and all the students over at Gear Park Elementary. Next item, please.
Superintendent's update.
Good evening, everyone. So we will start as we've done in the past, since the pandemic, with a moment of silence. For all those who are suffering and may have lost a loved one as a result of COVID, there are over 559,000 deaths in the United States and over 17,000 in Michigan. So we'll just take a moment of silence. I am just going to go down my list like I've done at every meeting. So next, we have retirements, and I will announce the retirees. And we want to both congratulate them and thank them for their years of service in the district, serving our students. Catherine Korn, over 20 years of service. Pamela DeTone, over 27 years. Terry Fittell, over 10 years. Rhonda Harris, over seven years. Beth Isaacs, over 44 years. Amira Kadiri, over 26 years. Brian Kemian, 22 years. Regina Mann, over eight years. And I believe he's here, Rob Cedarland, I know he was here. He's been in the district with us. We appreciate his service. Sharon Verduxso, 18 years. And David Williams, over 10 years of service. So let's recognize them with a... And I will always, I always send out congratulatory cards to the retirees. So next, I have on my commentary, Arab American Heritage Month. The board passed this resolution back in June of 2018. And the resolution stated that every month, every month of April, moving forward, would be declared Arab American Heritage Month. So the purpose of recognizing is the contributions of Arab Americans to Dearborn, to the district, to the state, and to the nation. And so I wanted to take a moment and just thank all of our Arab Americans who are on the board and all those out there in the community, our staff and our students, for their contributions to the betterment of society. And to go along with that, my next item, I know it begins tomorrow. I wish all those who observe the month of Ramadan, a blessed month of Ramadan, and I wish you and your families and your loved ones all the best as you observe the holiday for the month of Ramadan. Next, I'm going to move along to talking about spring break first. And there were, we did decide to take a pause over spring break, and there were several things that went into that decision. So it wasn't like we just said, hey, we're off for sure for spring break. There was a lot of discussion that went on with administration. There was, you know, consultation with the board, but my administrators, we have nurses on our committee, and we were looking at numbers, obviously, within the district and the county. We were looking at the fact of the positivity rate and other factors that were going up. Although what I would say is that I have been to every building in the district, and our mitigation in the buildings was truly working. But we also were concerned with, you know, the potential for travel. So my team and I had discussions that were going on prior to the break. There was no final decision, but as the numbers started rising, I actually had a communication with the nurses the week of the break, into the break, and then a final decision was made to take a pause. One thing I would like to mention is that we, it impacted three instructional days. For some students, two in-person days, and for other students, it was one in-person day because we were off on the Monday. And we were also, we had the normal virtual day on the Wednesday. And to go along with that, because we were, we're working together to try to combat the spread of COVID, we brought in, as I think most are aware, and it was very successful, the antigen testing site on the Monday, the 5th, which was a day off. We had, I believe, over 266 individuals that came. And Mr. Leacher really took the lead on this from the district. We thank Etzel and their administration, their staff, for supporting it. We would look to partner with the state for future opportunities as well. And I think that is a positive because it's another way that we can help. With that, we also have antigen testing, which is state mandated now for athletics. And it is something that we were looking at doing prior, and then it was mandated by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. It is something new. It was mandated prior for wrestling, but now it is all the athletes, ages 13 to 19. So we have brought in individuals to train on that, and there will be more information we're going to provide to parents, but it is a way, I believe, to, you know, we have students that want to be in athletics, just like any other extracurricular. So this is another safeguard that we can implement to ensure that we're combating COVID and that we know, you know, where the potential problems may be, so that we can isolate individuals and prevent the spread of the COVID virus. So this is another step that our district is taking. And we could provide more detailed information on some of the testing and process for parents. With that, I want to mention, under vaccines, and I know we've already made it public, we're very pleased that we have approximately 2,200 staff that are vaccinated. And here's another effort to help spread, you know, spread the COVID, or to help prevent the spread of COVID, excuse me. Thank you. And now the next thing is with students. And so we started last week, I believe we may have been the first district, maybe in the state, from what I heard, that was actually partnered and had students going in a massive partnership. And so we have over 430 students that were scheduled in through the Detroit Medical Center for the vaccine. We initially had about 300, we were able to up that the last few days to about 430. We're looking for other partnerships with Henry Ford Hospital and possibly the city of Dearborn, where we may be able to bring the vaccination clinics to schools and make it very convenient. In this case, the DMC, for the doses they had, and the one thing is for, so it is eligible for students, when I say students, it's 16- and 17-year-olds. So you have to be 16, 17, or 18. Now, if you're 16 and 17, it has to be the Pfizer. So that's the issue that we were able to secure the Pfizer doses through DMC. They had that available. So we're going to continue to work with them and other groups, but I think that's a positive. I actually went down to the DMC on Friday. I saw our buses from a couple of the schools, they were dropping off students. And we did have a lot of parents or students that got transportation on their own, so we'll continue to do that as well. All right. So I'm gonna, I moved the in-person instruction kind of to the bottom, and I want to discuss it now. And I'm going to tie it into the Wayne County Health Department. So I was mentioning about our mitigation, and we know that, you know, there was a lot of factors. We took the week pause at spring break, and I think it was a responsible thing to do. But then we made the decision to continue and to start up our COVID, our in-person model, hybrid model, which is, we currently have approximately 8,000 students that are in the 100% virtual learning program. But then if you divide that, if you divide the number of students that are coming in person and divide them into two, we do not have a huge amount of traffic in the buildings because of our model. And so there's mitigation and there's social distancing. So those are all factors. I've been to every building, I've personally seen what's going on, and it is working. I have the Wayne County Health Department in there because I've talked to Dr. Hamami. In fact, I was on a town hall last Thursday, and he agreed with our data, and we're constant. We have awesome nurses that are on top of the situation whenever there's a potential case. They do contact tracing, and I can comfortably say that we have not had any spread within the schools for in-person instruction, other than some of the extracurricular. And people say, and this came up on Thursday, well, how do you know that? The reason we know that is because by law, and our nurses do a great job, we are required to work with the county health department for contact tracing. And so we, anytime there's a report or we determine that there's a positive case, which right now has been community spread. So we've had students that are reporting, they, you know, or staff in some cases, but students that have actually been 100% in the virtual program, but they're still reporting to us. Well, they haven't been in the school. And so there wouldn't be contact tracing with us in the school. Now, if there's a positive case that is reported of someone in the school, there's contact tracing to see if there's a close contact. And we, they make the determination if there needs to be quarantining or any mitigation that may be necessary. So that's how I can comfortably say that. And I think a lot of you are aware that the state puts out the outbreak list, they call it. Now, their definition, I'm not necessarily in agreement with, because they only qualify it as two cases, and I have brought that up to them, you know, to possibly change that because when you hear of two cases, well, to me, that's not really a true outbreak. You know, I don't know what exactly that number is, but if, you know, it's definitely more than two. I mean, if someone, there was transmission. So they said they would look at it, but they haven't changed that yet. So we have to then clarify when we see that. And that's what's happened. It hasn't been what I would call true outbreak, but it is the state definition of an outbreak with the two cases. And so that's how I can comfortably say that those factors are working. So other things that occurred this week, which we start tomorrow, is some of you may have heard that the assessment for the state, they applied for a waiver, it was denied by the federal government. I was, you know, Dr. Rice was asking for that waiver, I support the direction he took. You know, we're in COVID, but the reality is, is that we have to comply, and we have to follow, and so we have to offer that test to students, even if they're in the 100% virtual. Students do not, are not forced to come in, but we have to legally offer it. And so that was another factor that came into our decision this week, along with the fact that we have safety protocols in place, along with the fact that we have so many staff vaccinated to come in person and bring our students back in a hybrid. Again, we do not have a lot of traffic in the buildings, especially at the high school, and that has been the area that the state has been talking about with concerns. And so those all factored into our decisions. We're in, I'm in constant contact with the Wayne County Health Department, and Mr. Mustin, myself, and two of the nurses go on a Tuesday every fourth, Tuesday at 4:30. We have all the heads from the city that are involved, from the local community, through the governor's office. But we also have not only the hospital officials, but the Wayne County heads, and Dr. Hamami's in that meeting. And we ask him every week if there's any recommendations for anything different, and though it has not. It has been that we are following, we are implementing our protocols, we have the mitigation that is safe, and he agreed too with, obviously, some of the changes that have occurred with the CDC studies that have come out that talked about it being safer in schools for in-person instruction. So we're all following that. What I would also say is, although we are implementing our in-person hybrid model, we are continuing to monitor. And we can make appropriate decisions or changes, if necessary, if we see issues that come up. To this point in time, I'm going to say, and I said it publicly, even in the town hall or wherever, you know, we cannot guarantee 100% that there's not going to be any spread. I don't think anybody can. But what we can do, and this is what CDC studies say, is because we have such good mitigation, and you are required to wear masks in schools, you are required to social distance, sanitize, those are the controls that we have. And so that is why our student, it's safe. And again, it's never 100%, but we, I believe, in this board has, throughout this pandemic, put the safety of the community, the staff, and the students in the, as a number one priority. Balancing that with the need for in-person instruction, when I talk to students and parents, and their social, emotional, and for some of the kids, just how important it is for them to be in the schools, and I've talked to them personally. So that's the balance that we're facing right now. And again, we go back to the virtual learning. We have so many students in it, I believe that we've been extremely accommodating, and everyone has had a choice. If they chose, and even right now, they could, you know, someone needed to keep someone home, parents can make that choice. But I, you know, there's other parents that are asking for their kids to be in, especially, you know, whether they're special ed, maybe ELL students, or just students that need in person. And again, I've talked to these students, I know how important it is for them to be involved. So that's the balancing act that we've had to deal with, and we are, as COVID changes, as the rules, we still monitor the positivity. There was a matrix, but the Michigan Health Department has now said we don't need to follow that because of the CDC recommendations and things that have come out. So all of that has been a buildup to our decision-making, and I wanted to kind of end on my, on my agenda items, because that is on the agenda tonight for a renewal of the current plan that has been approved. And so I kind of wanted, President Thorpe and I talked, that we would kind of end on this section here. But those are all the contributing factors. And I can tell you, my team and I are constantly meeting. We met again on Friday, we talked to the nurses, we're talking to the health officials. One thing is that, you know, I've talked to some parents, and they say, well, can you guarantee that we're not going to be, you know, we're going to have instruction in a month down or whatever it is? I can't. I truly can't, because we have to continue to monitor the condition, make sure that what we think is safe and that there's that factor of balancing the need for students to be in. You know, is there a possibility of growing remote? There always is, if something were to occur. But having said that, that's where we all need to, and I know I'm taking some time on this, but I think it's very important, we all need to do our part. You know, wearing our masks, not just in the schools, but out in the community, wherever we're supposed to. Get vaccinated, please. I got vaccinated in the proper turn. Please get vaccinated. It's a way that, you know, can help to combat the spread. So I promote that. Again, I know it's everyone's individual decision, but these are methods that we know that are being promoted to help so that we can get back to some semblance of normalcy because we do want to get back to some normal life, into some normalcy. So I will end, and I'll take a pause, President Thorpe, before I go on to the non-agenda.
Question. Trustee Berry?
Not a question, but Dr. Maliko, when you were pushing to redefine what an outbreak is, cases, I thought about it just now. Some of our buildings, because districts in the state of Michigan, say two cases is an outbreak, and 800-plus elementary or 2,700-plus building, that's not fair to Dearborn. Keep advocating.
Thank you.
Trustee Petlicoff?
Okay, a couple of things, and I don't want to belabor it either, but Trustee Watts and I have visited many schools in the past few weeks as well to have a understanding of what is going on in the buildings as well, so that we could speak to the community at large. And I, I, I'm not going to speak for Trustee Watts, but I felt that we've done the best that we possibly could in the buildings in a manner to mitigate as much as we can. But there's only so far that any individual organization can do. It's also dependent upon the community at large, and we need to have the support and help. I will tell you that regularly I go by some of, I live on the East End, I go by several banquet halls in my neighborhood, and on the weekends, I have seen the parking lots packed. I know that they're having events that are more than likely not COVID compliant. I also see after-school activities with the students in the neighborhoods and in the parks. So to only view the schools as a dangerous place is probably not realistic when it comes to the opportunity for students to be exposed to COVID virus. Right now, we do know that the largest population of people coming down with it are not the ones who have already been vaccinated. They have data on that. It appears it's those that are still currently unvaccinated that are showing up at the hospital doors, and it's more of the younger generation that is experiencing illness still. So we need to, to convince people that there are measures that can be taken, that we can safely, we have given everybody every opportunity to have a choice. We spent a year being closed and providing a virtual world that wasn't successful for every student. We now have decided that we've given other layers of insurance and options by the mitigation factors that we've had in place, getting our staff vaccinated if they so chose, and providing hybrid days. But we need to realize that this is a balance of competing needs, and we're not going to be able to satisfy everybody. So those, but we've given every option that is feasible to provide people with an alternative. So if you're not comfortable with sending your child into the building, you can have that opportunity to stay virtual. If you want that child to have their in-person learning, we've given an option that's not a full option, but the best option right now to mitigate. So I don't know what else we could possibly do at this point but to monitor. The only thing I do ask, there is, we set ourselves up for a bit of confusion when we had these metrics that we were using, and people became relying upon it. And we said the 5% positivity rate, and now they're seeing it's 18%. So now they're saying, what's changed to make you think that we're okay in sending people into the buildings when the positivity rate is so much higher? So I think that we need to, because we took away the metric standards as a gauge for opening and closing schools, and instead gave you the authority to move forward with the decision-making on a case-by-case, so to speak, platform that we have on our website, an explanation of how, of taking away that one decision and replacing it now with a different one, so that the parents can understand why we've shifted our position and that it wasn't something that wasn't given a lot of thought. So I just want them to be able to, because we're not going to be able to please everybody anyhow, but I want them to understand that we're not doing this on a whim, and that we're taking care to the best of our ability to provide everybody with the choices that they need to move forward.
I'd bring up a couple of quick points. With the governor speaking last Friday and asking people to pause, she brought up two things, the high schools and the sports. There had been problems with sports. We had problems here in Dearborn with sports previously, but those were with the winter sports. So this weekend was the first time that we had the testing mandatory for all the high school athletes. I'm talking to one of the athletic directors earlier today, roughly what we're seeing is that there was about 480 students that were tested, there was three positive. That is a very low number, that's under 1%. The second thing is the district's been very polite when they've been talking about the vaccinations that we've got available for students. We've got about 1,200 roughly that were set aside for Pfizer through DMC, and Dr. Maliko mentioned 430 being used. And what all the comments from the district said is, is parents, bring your students down, and if you want to get vaccinated also, be our guest. I'm going to say no. Sorry, parents, but you're over 18, you can get a Moderna or a Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccination. Our 16- and 17-year-olds only have that one shot, that one chance. And we've got 6,000 students that fall into that age group roughly. So those 1,200 shots is only a 20%. So I really want those vaccinations to go to people who are only 16 and 17, and let the parents go through the city or other means to find their vaccines. And we do believe that we're going to have one more crack with DMC later this week before we keep working on that. So I encourage everybody who's got the 16- and 17-year-olds and the 18-year-olds, get down there, get the kids vaccinated. Trustee Moses?
Yeah, I also have a few comments. The first item, obviously, about in-person instruction, and I commend all of our schools and all of the precautions to mitigate the spread of COVID. I've seen that firsthand, Park Elementary and others as well. The cases are too high, and I'm not going to here stay and beat on a dead horse, as they say, on gatherings that I see in the community, that is very, very inappropriate at this time, that we see so many people dying from this virus, and that this virus is real, and still people are just not caring, and it's very, very unfortunate. And what will prompt us to unfortunately end in-person instruction or pause it at times as we did after the spring break? I ask people to be more careful to wear their masks. We can't say this enough, because it does save lives. I just personally feel that with the COVID cases that we saw, the COVID reports that we do receive as a board, we see the majority of them being in high school, that we would have to consider pausing high school until the numbers go down. And I have another question about testing, right now that we're doing testing, not COVID testing for athletes, but rather the standardized exams, that the parents have the option to opt out for virtual, do they have, how about the parents who are in person, do they have that option as well? So, and can we also be as transparent as possible with that and to make sure that all parents have the option of opting out if they'd like?
Do you want to answer that? Do you want to see about any other questions?
Sure, I would have a few.
Keep going with additional?
Yeah, keep going, and then I'll...
Trustee Watts?
I wanted to payback on what Trustee Petlicoff had said, because we have had a chance to, and thank you to Dr. Maliko and to John Leacher for arranging all of those tours, to go into every single building and to see what each individual building's mitigation plans look like. And so to all the admins and teachers and to students, thank you for letting us visit your schools. I know that we were saying, we've given a lot of the parents a choice, and I know for myself and my husband, we made the personal choice, what was best for our daughter. And I've shared this with some of the teachers when we went through the building, but she, I had forgotten who she was pre-COVID, because she really did change when she was at home, and she's nine. And I've seen the changes, the positive changes, for her being back in school. And it's the little things that I think I can't replicate at home. It's seeing her friends, it's seeing, he's going to get embarrassed, the little boy she has a crush on. Those little things there that I think, as parents, we forget that those nuances, that those social interactions, that completed her. And so I say for us, that was probably a great, for her, it was... And so I say for us, that was probably a great, for her, it was the best choice. And I know that that doesn't work with everybody and everyone's home life is going to be different. So I say at that chance, you know, you make the best choice, then it works for your family. And I think, you know, when it comes to standardized testing, what you were saying, trustee Moser, I'm extremely disappointed that with the new administration with the Department of Education, that Secretary Cordona did not request our denial, our request to pause standardized testing. And I would really wish that the time that was spent in the classroom wasn't for standardized tests. And in the end, what are we really testing them for? What is, how is this test going to be used? And for me, the stakes of what a standardized test, what they have and have nots, does not define a student. And so I'm just extremely disappointed that that is something that we have to go forward with, or I retract, that we have to offer. But that being said, again, as parents, you can decide whether or not that time is spent best with a child and you know your child best. So there, it's nice to be able to have those options. And that's all. Thank you.
Trustee Barry.
I echo trustee Watts' and trustee Petlicoff's comments. Elaborate a little bit on trustee Petlicoff's comments. What changed? There's no doubt in my mind, things have changed. The obvious is vaccines. Hospitals are better prepared now. Let's not, let's not forget that when we used to hear about somebody going to the hospital, chances are they weren't going to make it out. Now, we hear, you know, so-and-so in the hospital, two, three days later, they're home. Maybe a week later, they're better off. And the other thing is, we know what's going on when it comes about mental health. I mean, trustee Watts mentioned it a couple of times. That's been taken into consideration of our, you know, part of our decision. Dr. Maleko mentioned community spread. I'm going to take it a step further, Dr. Maleko. Since March 12th of 2020, I can confidently say, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we have zero, zero deaths when it comes to students, staff, or community members due to community spread from our schools. There's no doubt in my mind there. That's important to us. You know, why the 5%? We didn't, I mean, we're not, we weren't the experts when we came up with the 5%. We knew when it was a 4.6, less people were catching COVID, going to the hospital, dying. We were in a good place. That's why we chose 5%. But now, we did hand off to the administration. They, I mean, their team meets, what, every week, Dr. Maleko, at least every week? Constant communication with the Health Department, at the county, at the state level. So I am very, very confident with the decision the administration is making right now. And I will defend that decision. Thank you.
Trustee Watts.
I just wanted to give due diligence or to give the proper credit for, again, what I was saying when we went through school buildings. The teachers have been, their energy is contagious. So when I say that my, I can see that my child is flourishing. It's because the continuation from the screen has turned into a 3D interaction. And so for that, I commend all of the teachers because that is something, again, that the screen is a great option, but the interaction that she's been able to have with her teachers, even with a mask on, but to be able to see, you know, the creases when the teacher smiles and whatnot has been invaluable for her. So thank you all, to all of those teachers who, day in and day out, probably never turn off their emails and never stop checking. And I appreciate that. I appreciate them. Thank you.
Trustee Moser.
I have a question about the NWEA testing.
Are we still administering that this spring? We are?
You want to go ahead with everything?
Okay. All right, so a couple of things. So the CDC, and I'll kind of tie this with trustee Petlicoff and trustee Barry mentioned about the metrics. We do have it on our site that it talks about how we're in contact with the Health Department. So one of the things is that we didn't base it just on, you know, what we want to do as administration. It was based on the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services saying, after following the CDC guidelines about it being safe and then considering the vaccines, those are all factors that weren't there, as trustee Barry said, in the fall. So those are all factors. And that is listed on our site that we're in constant contact with Wayne County Health Department to get specific recommendations. And if there was a situation at a school, we would address that. Wanted to mention with the vaccines, President Thorpe, one thing that is available through DMC, which, and I get what you're saying with the Pfizer, they also have Moderna though at the same time. So if someone comes in, the 16, 17-year-old could get the Pfizer and then they have the Moderna, because I was down there, they do have that dose available. So if a parent really wanted to go down with their child and get it because of convenience, the Moderna is there along with Pfizer. Testing options, yes, we, the state, there were, changes have been happening constantly over the last few weeks because of the different decisions by the federal government. When the state then came out and said, yes, opt-out students, they put in, but they didn't get the waiver, but they're still promoting if individuals. So yes, any student can technically opt out. They hadn't used that language up until recently, but that's language now that we received from them that Dr. Patterson has. And Dr. Patterson, I am going to get him, he's going to be providing me and Ms. Farage with direct information on the different testing as far as the dates, whether it be M-step, and I will provide that to the board so everyone's aware. Again, there was flexibility given for the M-step days and when you could administer it, but we still have to offer it and we are required to provide that. This week, we had a specific window for the SAT that we had to follow because they're state mandated. But again, individuals could opt out. As far as, yes, that's correct, trustee Barry. We have had no from any kind of spread of students or staff from COVID. Thankfully, we all want to stay positive. And again, those that have lost someone or a loved one, prayers are with them. But we did make tough decisions, protect everyone. And I would agree, yes, with the interaction with teachers. And I kind of mentioned the social well-being, so it's a balance. And I'm constantly in contact with the Health Department to get recommendations. You know, in the meetings, we'll let you know. I mean, and not only, we're not waiting for them to tell us, we're calling them all the time in our. So I think I got everything. I don't think I missed any.
Really quick before you go on, trustee Petlicoff.
Yeah, with the testing, some of the testing is a requirement to move a student into some of our special programs, I believe, to get them into DCMSD or some of the collegiate programs and whatnot. And also with the SAT is, and I, I can't recall, and forgive me for this, isn't that a requirement for graduation as well? So if we, if students start opting out, are we going to have some issues with how we manage moving these students forward through certain programs?
So my team and I, after getting direction from the state on this, we've met and we're providing flexibility, even for like the collegiate academy. And I don't remember the specific protocol, but we're working on flexibility so you could use previous testers or there's other factors. Now with that, we had to work with our President Cavalluna's team in the college because there's requirements with taking courses. So we have to work with them and Dr. Nealon. But Ms. Peterson and Mr. Fadallah have been in conversation and we're going to allow flexibility. The guideline for SAT, it was a guideline, it's not a policy, it's not a board policy. So we are waiving that guideline until further notice, given the COVID situation. So I made that decision after discussions with our team. And I know Ms. Peterson put some information. We had some meetings the last couple of weeks. So that is, you know, it's aligned with where the state has, and it's just the right thing to do. We actually, last year, we did it as well.
Yeah, I just really was asking so that the community at large.
Yeah, thank you. And yeah, so we're being very flexible. I've had conversations with a lot of you on that. And right now, I, again, I'm going to support the direction that Dr. Rice took with this and his, you know, there is flexibility, but we wish that we could have got more waivers and not had to do. With the NWA, it's something that we don't use as high stakes. It's really more just for assessing our own individual students to get, whereas the M-step is something that's required by the state for high stakes testing. The NWA, we do the pre and the post so that we can, you know, use it to help grow our students with their instruction and really meet their needs. It's one of the things that we choose to do, but we don't use it for high stakes.
Is the M-step what they use for evaluations as well?
I mean, it technically could be one, but right now.
But we have other options.
You know, in superintendents, we've all talked. The state has talked about, you know, right now, it's technically supposed to be 40% student growth over multiple years. And there's bills up in Lansing that talk about going back to 20. You might remember, we were at 20%, then went to 25, then up to 40, we keep going back. And so it may, you know, obviously, none of us want to be in COVID. But one thing I think it's going to force the conversation, and I'm on some committees with Dr. Rice at the state, is it's really forcing the conversation on these high stakes testing and what we may need to do long-term to make changes to possibly the M-step or other things. And we know our good friend, you know, blesses Mr. Wiston, who passed away, was trying to make changes then. And so maybe now is the opportune time as we can see, you know, the need for maybe changing our process and the system and making it more about student growth and really making sure it helps our students. Because we do know that there is going to be, you know, a learning loss because of COVID, not just in Dearborn, but in Michigan and across the nation. So we have to address that.
A couple of things I'd bring up, trustee Petlicoff, with the testing is, I've got an eighth grader. So the PSAT is usually one of those requirements for the DCMSD program. And there's been communication out to eighth grade parents that the grade point is also going to be used possibly as a substitute. The other thing is, for any parent that's thinking about opting their students out of things like the SAT, while it might not be required, it doesn't mean it's not in the student's best interest to get that test done at some point. Because colleges, even if they don't say they're really looking at it, they're probably going to be looking at that one a little bit. And since it's this week, it's not that we really have a chance to get information out there. But I'd be careful sometimes when somebody tells you something's not required. Doesn't mean that it doesn't still look good if you get it done.
And the rules can change on a dime sometimes.
Trustee Watts.
When it comes to, and you had mentioned it, the M-step and NWA, it's, obviously, they're not equal and whatnot. And with the M-step, if students were to opt out of that, what is that test, what are the outcomes of that test used for? What is the downside of opting out of that?
For the individual student, the M-step, non-high school SAT, I do not necessarily see any downside at this point because we don't use it to measure growth.
Right.
And this year's data, and I've talked to Dr. Patterson, I mean, our data is not going to be reliable across the state or nation. So, you know, it's something we're required to implement and, you know, I don't, we have to provide it and it's law. And we're going to do that. We're going to, you know, follow. But they did, they did waive, the feds did waive the use of it for accountability. So, you know, I guess it does provide information though. So I'm not saying it's not, you know, it's an assessment that provides information for our students and it looks at the, you know, some of the curriculum and the standards. But I guess the question, and this is where Dr. Rice went, is in a COVID situation, is this really the top priority? So again, we're going to do what we need to do, but we're going to make sure that we allow, you know, for flexibility.
Right. And with the NWEA that the elementary schools have taken, the students, they've taken at the beginning, and I think some of them, depending on the grade level, took in the middle and the end. So we're going to be able to see with the NWEA, an instant growth or we'll have, we'll have an instant report as to how the individual student is doing, whereas M-step has never given us that sort of.
No, because we don't get the results until we're.
Right. So I guess I'm trying to make that distinction for the parents.
It's real time with NWEA.
And then, just going back to the vaccinations, just for public knowledge, that we, you know, we have the vaccinations that are offered, like you were mentioning with DMC. And then we also have it at the Performing Arts Center for the six communities of Dearborn and Dearborn Heights and some of the surrounding communities. But for those, and then I have used this to help some, some people get vaccinations outside of our communities, if there's a website and it's very reliable and convenient, but it's vaccinespotter.com. So for those residents, vaccinespotter.com. So those residents who don't qualify to go to the Forward Performing Arts Center, and those are Dearborn, the ones who do qualify are Dearborn, Dearborn Heights, Garden City, Inkster, Redford, and Allen Park. So residents outside of those, if they go to vaccinespotter.com, they have all the CVS, Kroger, all of the pharmacies connected. And if you put in your zip code, they'll give you appointments immediately.
And Wayne County Community College is going to start with Watkins?
Yes, they started that today.
Today, at the Taylor campus.
Yeah, so vaccinespotter.com. So even if, you know, you have your vaccine, but maybe you have somebody who lives in Livonia and they can't seem to find it, go on there because you can find it. And I've had success trying to find vaccines for some resident, or some friends who live in other places. So, thank you.
Trustee Moser.
Yeah, I was just going to say about NWEA and those high-stake tests. I mostly depend on the teacher's report. The report card really tells how the student is doing. The teacher really knows where the students stand. And there, those standardized tests are not true measures of the student's growth from my point of view. And I would hope that the district will consider opting out of NWEA unless, if the state is not going into adopting it as a model. So we would reduce the time of testing and spend that more on instruction time.
I would say that I would take the opposite look at the NWEA because since it is real time, I've been in schools and the principals have been able to show you what's going on with each class so that the individual teacher can know if there's an area that needs immediate focus. So it's one that gives us a heck of a lot more information quicker. And how important is that in this world? I'd rather get rid of the M-step if we ever had a choice, but we can't at the state.
I would rather too.
But just to keep us moving along in the agenda, I think we could easily have a presentation about all the testing at a future meeting. And then if there's nothing else, we'll move on to non-agenda items.
I was just going to make, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Maleko, I believe the M-step has to be taken in person, whereas the NWEA.
They're all in person, right?
The NWE was virtual.
We allowed NWE to be taken from home as well because it's our assessment that we, now, we understand the reliability factors, but it was data that we, so we were very flexible with the NWE.
It didn't, it didn't have the weight to it that the M-step had that required in person. It was more for our own personal use than NWE.
Okay, just one thing. I think I had mentioned 8,000 in the virtual learning. It's actually about 7,200. I had it written down here, just to correct that. It's about approximately, but that tends to change and fluctuate a little. So I have a few more items under non-agenda. Want to recognize our media specialists for School Library Month. I know the board's received an email on that. So if we could just show them a round of applause and appreciation. And I did put out a post on that. I know the state and others have recognized them. I also want to mention a few more recognitions here under non-agenda. We have Mr. David Mustenan and his team for the Meridian Award. He didn't know I was going to announce this, but he works extremely hard. And Jacob, Eric, Katie, who are all in some way or another in tune with this board meeting. They help these board meetings run, as the board is aware. And so if we could show appreciation to him and his team. And coming up later this month is Administrative Professionals Day. So I want to thank all those in the district, across the district. And of course, you know, I have to give a special shout out to Ms. Harris, Ms. Joffer, and Ms. Newman in our department. But I'm really recognizing everyone, and Joanne's another one that makes the board meeting run. Without her, it'd be very difficult. So let's show them appreciation as well. And I want to congratulate Ms. Farage. Some of the trustees may remember, in 2018, the Advanced Ed, we had a wonderful presentation here. And she is now a lead evaluator for, it's now called Cognia. And so I want to recognize her for, this is a huge honor for having her doing that at a national level. So yeah, congratulations. And the last thing I want to talk about vaccines, so last month, I believe, I was thanking Ms. Ali Badzi. It is a lot of planning and a lot of work, and it was done over spring break. And I got to thank everyone involved, but Ms. Peterson took the lead on that. And really, she worked very hard and even gave up a vacation day to help out. And so I want to thank her for her dedication, along with the rest of the team, but she took the lead on that. So, and that's all I have. Thank you.